Welcome. My name is Brenda Scott and I am a Commissioner with the Riverside County Behavioral Health Commission. The Behavioral Health Commission is an advisory body composed of volunteers appointed by the Board of Supervisors who work in conjunction with Riverside University Health System Behavioral Health to ensure citizen and professional involvement in all aspects of department services. This video is designed to seek your input as a stakeholder in behavioral health care in Riverside County. Every year, California counties develop planning documents that identify mental health programs and services to be funded by the Mental Health Services Act, which is otherwise known as MISA, a voter-approved proposition from 2004. That proposition was written to include meaningful participation from the community. We encourage everyone to provide input. This video includes speakers who will give you an overview of the Mental Health Services Act planned highlights, changes and program goals developed out of stakeholder input just like yours. When this video is posted, it will include a link to the entire draft plan and to a toolkit of planned summary materials. You will also find a feedback form that can be completed and submitted electronically. For those who are wishing to provide oral comments instead, this post includes an MHSA feedback telephone number that allows you to leave a recorded feedback. The Behavioral Health Commission will ensure that all stakeholders have an opportunity to be heard and all comments provided electronically or as voicemail messages will be recorded and become a part of public record. The Behavioral Health Commission will review all the comments and recommended changes to the draft plan if necessary based on the comments received. Thank you for joining us today. Together, we can improve opportunities for a healthier, more resilient Riverside County.
Thank you, Brenda. My name is David Shawan. I am a clinical therapist and the Mental Health Services Act Administrator for Riverside County. My job is to ensure Riverside's compliance with the Mental Health Services Act, otherwise known as MHSA or MISA. The Mental Health Services Act was a ballot measure passed by California voters in November 2004 that provided specific funding for public mental health services. The act imposed a 1% taxation on personal incomes exceeding $1 million. This funding provided for the expansion and transformation of the public mental health service system with the expectation to achieve results such as reductions in incarcerations, school failures, unemployment, and homelessness for individuals with severe mental illness. If you have an interest in the public behavioral health care system in Riverside County, you are a stakeholder. An important part of MHSA compliance is ensuring an active stakeholder process where you and people like you can provide feedback on sustaining programs, developing programs, or changing programs in Riverside's MISA plan. This video will serve as an introduction and an orientation to the MISA plan. This year's plan is an annual update, a progress report, on how the current Riverside MISA plan is doing. After you listen to this video, you can click on the links embedded with the post and read more about the plan in detail, or how you can provide written feedback. You can also give verbal feedback by calling the MHSA feedback voicemail using the telephone number also posted with this video. MHSA is only one of the funding streams for Riverside University Health System Behavioral Health, or RUHSBH. The MISA plan does not represent all of the public behavioral health services in Riverside County and it is not meant to function as a guide to all services available. Not all services can be funded under the MHSA. MISA is divided into five components, almost like chapters in a book. Each component addresses a different area of the public mental health service system and each has its own rules and regulations. This video includes updates and planning in each of the components. Briefly, the components are: Community Services and Supports, or CSS for short, is the largest component of MHSA. CSS includes our full-service partnerships, also known as FSP, our peer support services, and the programs in our crisis system of care, housing and homeless outreach, and the specialized programs for justice-involved consumers. Prevention and Early Intervention, or PEI, is the next largest component of the MHSA. It is designed to reduce stigma related to seeking services, to reduce discrimination against people who carry a diagnosis, to prevent the onset of a serious mental illness, to provide early intervention for people with symptoms for one year or less or who do not meet the criteria for a mental health diagnosis, or to provide low-intensity or short-term interventions. Riverside's work plans include: mental health outreach, awareness, and stigma reduction; parent education and support; early intervention for families and schools; a transitional age youth project; serving people in older adult communities; and trauma-exposed services and services for the underserved cultural populations. The next component is Innovation, or INN for short. The Innovation component does not have its own dedicated funding stream, but rather is funded out of portions of funding from the CSS and PEI components. It is an unusual component, used to create research projects that advance knowledge in the field, not designed to fill service gaps. These are time-limited plans from three to five years and they require additional state approval to access the funds. Riverside's current work plans include the TAE drop-in centers, the CSEC mobile teams, and the tech suite now known as Help at Hand. The next component is Workforce Education and Training, or WET for short. Original WET funds were one-time funds that lasted for 10 years and expired in 2018. This component continues to be funded using dollars out of the CSS component. It is primarily designed around the workforce for mental health services to recruit, retain, and develop the public mental health system workforce. The last component is Capital Facilities and Technology, also known as CFTN. This component funds the physical infrastructure of behavioral health service delivery, the buildings-to-house programs, or to modernize our technology to facilitate electronic record-keeping or enhance service delivery. This component no longer receives dedicated funding, but instead can use a portion of the CSS dollars to support new projects. Next, I will provide you the highlights and changes for the CSS component. A notable change in the county-wide behavioral health care system is a reorganization of service delivery to create consistency across regions and to better identify service match to consumer need. Services are developed in a tiered approach that will include: 1. The continuation of the specialty FSP programs that currently operate; 2. The development of FSP care tracks in each of the outpatient treatment programs for all age levels; 3. Standard outpatient behavioral health care; and 4. General outpatient behavioral health care at integrated community or neighborhood health centers in a primary care setting. Our homeless and housing program is called HOPE, which stands for Homeless Housing Opportunities Partnership and Education Program. HOPE expanded staff to further support No Place Like Home legislation, add more street outreach, support Board of Supervisors and local city government requests for service, and to provide onsite services at housing locations for FSP consumers. Additionally, certified substance abuse counselors were added to the street outreach teams to provide enhanced engagement to their homeless outreach activities. HOPE also leveraged a large substance abuse block grant in partnership with our Substance Abuse Prevention and Treatment Program to assist in securing all five care levels of substance abuse treatment intervention, which includes people with co-occurring mental health disorders. RUHSBH has a full county-wide mental health crisis system of care. This system includes mobile crisis teams that assess and link people in the field to services and resources; a clinical therapist and law enforcement right-of-along program for mental health-related dispatch called Community Behavioral Assessment Teams, or CBAT for short; and three regional voluntary mental health urgent cares for people experiencing mental health distress. There are currently six therapist-police-officer right-of-along teams countywide and due to their success, nine more teams are planned for locations to be determined by community need. Additionally, our mobile crisis teams piloted a new interdisciplinary model in Lake Elsinore that incorporated experts in crisis response, substance abuse, and homelessness. Due to the pilot success, two more of these teams were developed to be stationed in Harupa Valley and Desert Hot Springs and will serve the surrounding areas.
Hi, my name is Diana Brown and I'm the Prevention and Early Intervention Manager here with Riverside University Health Systems Behavioral Health. The intent of prevention and early intervention is to engage individuals before the development of serious mental illness or serious emotional disturbance, or to alleviate the need for additional or extended mental health treatment. There are seven work plans with several programs and services in each. The PEI providers continue to show success in meeting program goals and objectives and reaching the target populations appropriately. This year includes the unprecedented impact of COVID-19. The impacts to PEI programs and community events required staff and contractors to be flexible and creative. Outcome data demonstrates consistent outcomes as in years past, however with some reduction in numbers served due to the impacts of COVID. Work Plan 1: Mental Health Outreach Awareness and Stigma Reduction includes several different strategies that focus on mental health stigma reduction, education about mental health symptoms, and increasing access for underserved communities, which include the Hispanic Latinx community, African-American Black community, Asian Pacific Islander, Native American or American Indian community, LGBTQIA, and the deaf and hard-of-hearing community, as well as the faith-based communities. PEI also funds the administration and activities under our Cultural Competency Unit. Here's Toni, our Cultural Competency Manager, to provide you with an update specific to her program.
Thank you, Diana. We have some exciting updates in cultural competency. The first being that a new cultural competency manager was hired and the staffing has been reorganized. The department's veteran services liaison, a bilingual Spanish-speaking clinical therapist, now reports to cultural competency. Additionally, the MISA Innovations component and the Related Social Service Planner position has been moved under the management of cultural competency. The Office Assistant 3 position was filled and cultural competency now shares a secretary with workforce education and training. In addition to having consultants and committees that serve the African-American Black, Asian-American, Pacific Islander, LGBTQIA+, Native American, American Indian, and Veterans populations, cultural competency will be expanding its cultural populations to include the All Abilities, Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing, Faith-Based Spirituality, Latino-Latina-Latinx, and Middle Eastern North African. The outreach and engagement for cultural competency has also seen some changes. Cultural competency will now use a population-focused model that promotes culturally-informed practices at all levels of service delivery. In the past, a regional approach was used, having an outreach worker in each of the three regions throughout the county. However, the new approach dedicates staff to specific cultural populations and creates a central contact to work in partnership with the corresponding mental health promoters, contractors, and cultural consultants. If you have any questions about cultural competency, please reach out to us via email or phone. Back to you, Diana.
Thank you, Toni. Continuing to other PEI updates, pre-COVID in-person activities in the community included coordination and support for faith-based health fairs with the Catholic Diocese. The Dare to Be Aware Youth Conference, held on January 31st of 2020, then included presenters and workshops focused on resilience with 723 participants in attendance. PEI also coordinated and facilitated suicide prevention gatekeeper trainings to include Know the Signs, Mental Health First Aid for Adults and Youth, Safe Talk, and Applied Suicide Intervention Skills Training, also known as ASSIST, to a total of 2,910 participants during fiscal year 1920. In 1920, this was the first year of the implementation of the Community Mental Health Promoters Program for the African-American community, Asian Pacific Islander community, LGBTQIA community, and the Native American community. These long-awaited programs successfully transitioned to virtual presentations during COVID. PEI administration also developed virtual trainings in response to COVID available to the general community focused on mental health awareness, self-care and wellness, trauma and resiliency, and suicide prevention. Since September, there have been 1,378 total participants that attended 67 trainings. These trainings are free and available every month. In addition, the Mental Health Back-to-School Virtual Toolkit was developed for school staff and organizations serving youth in response to COVID and social or racial injustice. Suicide prevention activities include the release of the Suicide Prevention Strategic Plan in June of 2020. In September 2020, through a resolution by the Board of Supervisors, this strategic plan was recognized and adopted as a county-wide initiative. In October 2020, the first convening of the Suicide Prevention Coalition took place. The coalition is made up of six subcommittees designed to implement each of the strategic approaches identified in the plan. PEI also awarded 17 organizations across the county with suicide prevention mini-grant funding who provided virtual workshops and activities focused on suicide prevention utilizing the Each Mind Matters Toolkit. Work Plan 2: Parent Education and Support includes services that assist parents and families in building protective factors and reducing risk for the development of mental health problems. The Strengthening Families Program is a 14-week parenting program that involves the whole family. Transitioning to a virtual platform was a challenge and required creativity and resourcefulness in order to maintain fidelity to the evidence-based practice, as well as engage families. Two contract providers worked together alongside the PEI Staff Development Officer to adapt the model. The virtual program was reviewed by the master trainer of the model and recognized as the only program across the country to transition to a virtual platform while maintaining fidelity. The teams were asked to present to other SFP programs across the country. Work Plan 3 is our Early Intervention for Families in Schools Project. This includes a school-based program that's designed to improve protective factors for children, teach parents effective communication skills, build social support networks, and empower parents to be the primary prevention advocates in their children's life in a setting that is de-stigmatizing to a lot of families' school. The Peace for Kids program provides RUHS behavioral health staff who are co-located at two Desert Hot Springs middle school sites to provide this evidence-based program to their students throughout the school day. The team did a great job of converting to a virtual format, but due to COVID disruptions to school, campus, and student life, this program's been put on hold until the impacts of COVID are diminished. Work Plan 4 focuses on transition-age youth. Outreach stigma reduction and suicide prevention activities for transition-age youth at highest risk of self-harm. This includes targeted outreach for LGBTQ TAE, TAE in or transitioning out of the foster care system, runaway TAE, and TAE transitioning into college. The TAE Resiliency Project is a new contract that includes two programs, Stress in Your Mood and TAE Peer-to-Peer Services. While the individual programs have been in the PEI plan for many years, the new contract joined the services together under one contract, allowing for improved service delivery. The directing change statewide program and film contest is also in this work plan. In fiscal year 1920, Riverside County submissions included 171 film submissions from 23 schools, 527 participants, and resulted in four state winners and 17 local winners. Work Plan 5: Our First Onset for Older Adults includes services to reduce first onset of depression and to reduce the impact of depression in the older adult population. PEI has offered cognitive behavioral therapy for late-life depression for many years. Currently, this program is only available in the desert. An RFP was released in October of 2020 to expand to all three regions. We anticipate services will be available in all three regions next fiscal year. The program to encourage active rewarding lives for seniors, or PEARLs, is an in-home and now available virtually and by telephone depression prevention service that focuses on problem-solving as well as behavioral and social activation. County-wide, depression and anxiety symptoms decreased for PEARLs participants overall. On average, PEARLs participants reported the greatest increase in satisfaction with their feelings about their emotional well-being and their relationship with their families. PEARLs program participants also reported an increase in satisfaction about their life in general and also reported an increase in participation in social and pleasant activities, as well as reporting improvement in the ways that they spent their spare time and the amount of friendship in their lives. PEI continues to partner with the Office on Aging to offer healthy ideas, a depression prevention program for older adults receiving case management services, and the Care Pathways Program, a 12-week class and support group for caregivers of seniors with mental illness, dementia, or who are receiving PEI services. 84.2% of participants who completed a satisfaction survey reported that the support groups helped them in reducing the stress associated with being a caregiver. Work Plan 6: Trauma Exposed Services provides services to reduce the negative impact of trauma for individuals, families, and the behavioral health service system. PEI has supported, in partnership with Workforce Education and Training, a system transformation called Trauma-Informed Systems. It recognizes that systems induce stress and this work focuses on creating healing environments, policies, and practices that mitigate the impact of stress and trauma for our workforce and all of us impacted by systems. PEI has also partnered with RUHS Public Health and RUHS Medical Center staff on the ACEs, or Adverse Childhood Experiences, Aware Grant, to train physicians on completing ACEs screening. PEI supported the development of the curriculum and will co-facilitate trainings for RUHS and community-based doctors and medical staff. Work Plan 7 focuses on underserved cultural populations. This includes programs designed to specifically address the needs of identified unserved and underserved cultural populations. The unserved and underserved populations in Riverside County also benefit from the other PEI projects identified previously. This year, after the success of the Building Resilience in African-American Families, or BRAF, Girls Pilot Program, an RFP was released for a program in each of the three regions. We anticipate both a boys' and a girls' program in each of our three regions next fiscal year. The long-anticipated Native American Project is expected to be in services before the end of the current fiscal year. The project includes a culturally-tailored family program called Well Variety: Celebrating Families, a large community gathering called GONA, or Gathering of Native Americans, that reflects cultural values, traditions, and spiritual practices, as well as the offering of cognitive behavioral-based therapy. And finally, fiscal year 1920 was the first year of implementation for our Asian Pacific Islander cultural population with a program called KITE, or Keeping Intergenerational Ties in Immigrant Families. KITE is a research-supported 10-week parenting class for Asian Pacific Islander families with children ages 6 through 17. Classes are available in Mandarin Chinese, Korean, Tagalog, and English. Six classes were conducted in Chinese, Tagalog, and Korean with 74 parents/ caregivers completing the classes, which is nearly an 80% completion rate out of 94 enrolled participants. The program was converted to a virtual platform with continued participation by community members with great success. If you have questions or want more information about prevention and early intervention, please email us at pei@ruhealth.org. Thank you.
Hello, I am Toni Robinson and I am the Mental Health Services Program Manager for Cultural Competency and Innovation. Innovation projects are essentially research projects. The funding is set aside in MISA. 1% of PEI dollars and 3% of CSS dollars create innovation funding that is used to help us learn the outcomes of new project ideas. Though the funding is set aside for this purpose, the project still has to be approved by the state. Additionally, all innovation projects must be community-driven. That means that there is a robust stakeholder process in which the innovation team gathers ideas from the community. Innovation projects are time-limited. All projects are three to five years. During that time, we track milestones and collect data to deem a project's success. If a project is unsuccessful, we share that learning with other counties throughout the state. If a project is successful, we still share the learning, but we also look at ways to absorb it into our service-delivery system. One of our current innovation projects is the Resilient Brave Youth Mobile Team, firmly commercially-sexually-exploited children. This project uses trauma-focused cognitive behavioral therapy to work with sexually-exploited children. This project partners with the Department of Social Services, Probation, and Riverside County Child Assessment. Another current innovation project is Help at Hand, firmly tech-sweat. This project looks at the use of technology to assist with mental health and mental illness. One of the focuses of this project was to create a virtual peer chat and we were working hard to develop it, as well as other applications. However, COVID-19 made us fast-chat that virtual chat and in April of 2020, we launched Take My Hand. This virtual chat can be accessed by any mobile device, tablet, or desktop computer. Peer support specialists operate the chat and on-call clinicians are available to support individuals who chats indicate they are in crisis. Our last innovation update is on our TAE centers. Those TAE drop-in centers innovations plan ended in August of 2020. The final data and outcomes are being reviewed. However, due to your community feedback, we have committed to continue the TAE centers under the CSS component. The centers are currently operating in limited capacity due to COVID-19. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions about innovation, please reach out to us by phone or email.
Hi, my name is Cherie Summers, Manager for Workforce Education and Training. The Workforce Education and Training component, or WET as we call it, is all about addressing workforce development needs for our department. This includes a specific focus on the recruitment, training, and retention of a qualified workforce. We want our workforce to be culturally competent, recovery-oriented, and we want people with lived experience included. We also want our staff to speak the languages and have the cultural capacities to help meet the needs of the community. The WET team is hard at work to support nearly 1,700 employees who serve more than 60,000 people each year. We're using creative strategies every day to help meet the needs of our professional staff and our community partners. So, it makes sense to start with some of our recruitment efforts. These are things that we're doing to inspire, promote, educate, and encourage a wide variety of folks to pursue careers in behavioral health, both today and in the future. These recruitment efforts are so important because California, and especially our region, is facing such a significant shortage of qualified folks to serve in public behavioral health. So, our recruitment efforts have to be creative and impactful in order to counteract the trends that we're facing. To help recruit for our future, we're in the classrooms at local high schools and community colleges, inspiring and mentoring students. We're helping to develop and hire our consumers in recovery to serve within our department. And we're offering attractive residency, internship, and volunteer programs to folks interested in behavioral health. Further, we're bringing in as many financial and academic incentives as possible, like offering access to competitive student loan repayment programs and tuition assistance. And when we bring those folks into our workforce, we want to make sure that they have the tools that they need to be successful. That's why training remains a top priority for our department. Each year, we gather data to help us understand the current and emergent needs of our consumers and the trends in public behavioral health, both locally and nationally. Armed with this information, we develop strategic training plans to help our workforce stay prepared to serve. This past year, our nation and communities have been undeniably impacted by the ongoing social justice and social equity issues in addition to the wide-ranging impact of the pandemic. We've had more people come to us for help with challenges like depression, complex trauma, and changing patterns in substance abuse. In response, we brought in cutting-edge trainings for staff to address these challenges so that they would have the knowledge and skills they needed to respond compassionately and effectively. These efforts included specialized trauma trainings from state experts and partnerships with evidence-based practice leaders in treating substance use disorders. The changing times also meant that we needed to adapt and evolve too. We purchased our first e-learning software. We worked to improve our most critical evidence-based practices and we created comprehensive training series for critical roles within our department. We expanded our ability to provide continuing education credits for our professionals and we transitioned many of our standard trainings to virtual platforms. In addition, we put in hundreds of training and development hours to improve supports for our supervisors. We made cultural competency training mandatory for all staff and contractors and we took the lead in negotiating, securing, and implementing a clinical supervision plan for the entire Southern California region. And our training efforts aren't just limited to our department staff. And our training efforts aren't just limited to our department staff. We know that it takes all of us, the community, to heal ourselves, so we continue to expand our efforts to include more opportunities for the community to train with our agency, to easily access information, and to offer these things in formats that are more accessible, economical, and responsive. And when the pandemic created more isolation, we led efforts to launch social media campaigns to ensure important information was shared with the public. We expanded our presence on social media and formed a partnership with public health. Our social media platforms housed medical, as well as behavioral health information, and we included tips and resources directly related to the COVID-19 virus. Finally, let's talk about retention. It's important to have a good working relationship with the professionals in our lives, so we place special attention and efforts on retaining our qualified, caring staff. One creative way that we do this is by paying attention to staff morale. When staff feel appreciated and their hard work is recognized, they're more likely to feel good about the work that they're doing, and they're more likely to stay with the agency. This in turn creates opportunities for staff and consumers to build trusting, dependable working relationships, which is a win-win for everyone. Over the past four years, we've continued to improve upon our staff recognition and appreciation program to help achieve this goal. The program includes active participation in an employee appreciation week, an online recognition portal, and upcoming toolkits with effective strategies to recognize and appreciate staff year-round. This past year, we continued to include live presentations of awardees at important events like our monthly Behavioral Health Commission, and we continued to include videos and banners on our website. Another great way to strengthen morale and to inspire long-term career development is to offer a variety of financial and academic supports and incentives to help staff gain new professional skills and create promotional opportunities. One of the most successful efforts in this area is our Tuition Reimbursement Program. This program is designed to reimburse tuition costs for employees pursuing certificates, degrees, or individual coursework that helps them create a promotional opportunity or that helps them increase their knowledge and skills in their current position. Since 2013, we have supported over 100 employees by issuing over $500,000 in tuition reimbursement. Staff have pursued a wide range of degrees and certificates, and we have proudly enjoyed more than a 70% retention rate among staff who we've awarded tuition reimbursement, many of whom who have gone on to promote within this agency. And finally, with the help of our executive team, we were able to secure one-time grant funds to help support workforce development efforts over the next four years by bringing in more advanced training, offering student loan repayments for staff, providing stipends for professional student interns, and creating career promotion activities in our local K-12 school systems. These are just some of the highlights from the past year. All of our projects are a part of a concerted effort towards ensuring a qualified and caring workforce for today and the future. Thank you.
Hi, it's David again, and I'm here to update you on the final component of MISA, Capital Facilities and Technology Component, also known as CFTN. CFTN funds the physical infrastructure of behavioral health service delivery, buildings-to-house programs, or to modernize our technology to facilitate electronic record-keeping or enhance service delivery. This component no longer receives dedicated funding as a part of the MHSA, but instead, we can use a portion of CSS dollars to support new projects. Roy's Desert Oasis, a 92-bed augmented board and care home, opened in the desert region in August 2020 to enable consumers to step down from more restrictive levels of care and back into the community. Ancillary support needs are also provided, as well as onsite behavioral health programming. Additionally, an adult residential treatment facility with 16 beds, also designed as an intermediate level of care, opened in NDO in January 2021. The Arlington Recovery Campus, located in the city of Riverside, will be a full-service campus of both residential and outpatient care, designed to assist consumers whose behavioral health needs have resulted in contact with our justice system or who require a more intensive recovery program to integrate successfully into the community. Early use of this developing space was converted into COVID surge units to meet the treatment needs of people experiencing a mental health emergency who also tested positive for COVID or who were showing possible COVID symptoms while quarantining them from the remaining hospital population. That concludes our presentation today. Thank you for participating in this year's Riverside County Mental Health Services Act Annual Update. Don't forget to click on the link for more information, to complete an online feedback form about this plan, or to use the MHSA Plan Feedback telephone number if you prefer to leave recorded feedback instead. Be well.